All right, Mr. Chairman, we're on the air.
Welcome to the Long Hill Township Planning Board meeting for September 24th, 2024. May I please have the announcements read?
Absolutely. Number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting and hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any meeting or hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments may be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial meeting or hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting or hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting or hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Number four, electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Number five, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Deputy Mayor Lavender?
Present.
Ms. Dill?
Present.
Mr. Hans is excused this evening. Mr. Malinowski is also excused this evening. Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Opalka?
Present.
Mr. Sandow?
Present.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Present.
Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're going to roll right into our agenda. Item number seven, we have some meeting minutes to approve. Assuming we've had an opportunity to review the June 25th, 2024 meeting minutes. Are there any changes, modifications, questions, or comments? None from me, Mr. Chair. There's none. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Doing one batch of meetings. I'm sorry, one set of minutes per, right? Because there are different members attending?
Yep, June 25th.
All right, moving June 25th, okay.
Okay. Can we have?
All in favor.
All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the September 10th.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, Mr. Mitchell earlier pointed out to the version I sent out had the oath of office was at number six. The oath of office, I corrected it to be Chris Sobieski, Board Attorney, and the new appointee to be William Mitchell.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for correcting that.
Copy and paste, you know. Classic.
No changes from my side, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the September 10th meeting? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I am abstaining.
Thank you. So noted.
The record, Teresa's abstained as well.
Okay, so moving right along.
Resolution.
Okay, so we're going to now go to the resolution. This is a resolution for Robert and Eva Nice, application number 23-09P, and this is an extension. We discussed this in the last meeting, Director President, maybe you could just summarize it.
Yeah, so I can make a quick fill-in? Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so you guys may recall at our last meeting on September 10th, we voted on an extension request requested by, you know, the applicant, see Robert and Eva Nice. Their attorney, Fred Zelli, had sent us a letter back in July requesting this extension, and we couldn't get the resolution distributed while in advance and ahead of the meeting, so the board moved to grant the extension but not memorialize the resolution because they wanted to have a chance to review it first. So that's what we're doing here. So it's really just, you know, the only members who'd be eligible to vote on this would be those who voted to grant the extension in the first place at the last meeting. But yeah, just, you know, for very straightforward, basic stuff, it's just, you know, reciting the various portions of the MLUL that govern extensions and summarizing the facts that they submitted the letter and, you know. I did confirm with Fred Zelli back on September 10th, actually, that they wanted the extension until November 9th, so this reflects that. So that's about it, Mr. Chairman, just in a motion, second, and I believe it will be a roll call on this one, this resolution.
I think we discussed, we never really did find out what's going on with Morris County, right?
All they told us was that there were some sort of, I think I quoted it in here, unforeseen negotiations or something, as a matter of fact, yeah. Remember, extended negotiations, I think that's a quote.
Okay, so is there a motion to?
Before a motion, I have a procedural question for counsel.
Sure.
I was not present at the September 10th meeting, and this resolution is loaded with September 10th on the last page.
Correct.
Even though the resolution itself was postponed and I am here tonight. So the question is, was I absent? Should I be recorded as absent? Or should I abstain because, tonight, because I was absent at the last meeting?
Mr. Sandow, I'd say you're probably not eligible in this particular vote.
Well, I'm eligible because I was a party to the original hearing.
Had you been here at September 10th to vote on the granting, then yes.
I was not.
Then that's why you're not eligible to vote on memorializing the resolution. That's what's ahead of you. The board's already granted the extension, this is just memorializing, you know, as if, similar as if we grant.
Well, why, should I be eligible to memorialize it because I was a part of the hearing way back when?
No, because you weren't here to, you weren't, you didn't vote on the extension. It's a separate, completely separate. Had you been here on September 10th, Mr. Sandow? Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Madam Secretary, I don't know how you're going to check me on the last page.
You and Teresa, Ms. Dill, will be noted as not eligible.
Oh, there's, yeah, it's another column.
Yeah.
There's another column, it reigns a course.
And, and the, the last line above Deborah's signature, which says, this is a true copy of the resolution adopted September 10th, should that read September 24?
Yes.
That should be. Good catch, Mr. Sandow, thank you.
And above the voting block, I suppose September 10th is correct because that's when the vote was taken to approve the extension.
Correct. And the line above that, this resolution adopted on September 24th, memorializes the action taken on September 10th.
Okay. I will vote not eligible.
Okay, so we're going to return to a motion. So moved September.
Second. Second.
Okay. Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Opalka?
Yes.
Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you all. All right, we can now move to the application this evening. Just a point of clarification, this is not an extension request, is it?
Oh, another copy and paste error on my behalf. No, it is not. It's a minor site plan application.
Make sure that doesn't carry over into our minutes.
No, minor site plan.
I'm pretty sure we have not seen this applicant before. Please, why don't you come up, if you would? Yes, you're welcome to sit here. Why don't you both sit here? We'll all get cozy.
We'll see how the microphones work, they might have to be playing some musical chairs. Mr. Chairman, I'll just point out while everyone's getting ready, I did have an opportunity to review the applicant's notice for this application, found it to be sufficient both in terms of its content and its timeliness of service. It was sent to owners of property within 200 feet of the subject property back on September 9th, and also published in the Moorestown Daily Record on September 13th, 2024, which were both more than 10 days in advance of tonight's hearing as required by the MLUL. So with that, I'll let counsel make some opening remarks, then we can get everyone sworn, and please proceed.
Thank you very much. My name's Dave Pinella, I'm an attorney in Randolph, New Jersey. I'm representing an applicant.
Would you please pick up that microphone and sit down, one or the other?
Get the other one, too.
Have a seat.
I'm so used to standing. I don't want to be disrespectful, but maybe I should say.
You can stand at the lectern, I guess, it'll be more comfortable.
The reason being is we have people online and it's helpful for them to be able to hear.
And our worldwide television audience over your head.
Well, now I'm going to start sweating.
Good evening. My name is Dave Pinella. I'm an attorney in Randolph, New Jersey. I'm representing the applicant, Orjor Kazneki, who's, we all call Ori. He's a restaurateur, owns Pomodora's in Marstown, and has found a beautiful building in your community at 1390 Valley Road, which he fell in love with, thought the price was right, and has purchased it. He's upgrading it and wants to make it a beautiful office complex, and he's well on his way to doing that. We are here tonight for a sign variance, and we will take you through that, and I would ask that Mr. Kazneki be sworn in.
Yep. So we'll get Liz, too, as well. You both raise your right hands for me. You both swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, great.
Okay, Mr. Kazneki, what is the property location?
So the property location is on, on Valley Road, going towards Sterling on the right side. It is a corner lot with a large parking lot, and it's a professional building. It's been a professional building forever. I purchased it from a family that owned it for about 45 years, and the father had, the original owner had died about 15 years ago. The son took it over, but it has been left behind, and the place looked very rundown. So I'm starting to do a cleanup. We did a little bit of painting around, fixing the parking lot, lights, and the sign came the next issue. I had a lot of tenants that expressed the concern of the sign being small, not being eligible, also.
Okay, hold up a second. Mr. Kazneki, I'd like to show you what's been marked as Exhibit B. Tell us what this is.
I'm sorry, when you say Exhibit B, you mean something that was submitted, that was submitted with the application, Mr. Pinella?
I'm sorry?
Was that the document referring to?
Yes, it's a survey, it's prior.
Okay.
I submitted it with the application.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you.
So the sign is located on the right side of the entrance of the building. It is marked with the sign. It is a small sign, two by five, for, and I believe we have right now 11 tenants, and it's just little tag names. The sign is not accurate either, because it does not fit all the tenants.
Okay, hold on one second. I'd like to ask you a couple of questions as we go along, although I'm sure you can regale us with the whole thing.
It's my first time, so I apologize.
That's quite right. So I am not sure how you want to be marked this, I've marked it as Exhibit B.
Well, it was already submitted with the application, correct?
Yes.
In advance of tonight's hearing?
And it's entitled Survey of Property, Tax Lot 9, Block 11612.
So it's already in evidence, it's already part of the record, we don't need to note it as a separate exhibit, because you've already submitted it.
I'm sorry, you don't need me to go through each one?
I'm sorry. No, if you're submitting anything that hasn't already been submitted this evening, that will be.
No, everything's been submitted.
Right, okay, so it's just part of the record already.
We'll discuss some of them. Mr. Kazneki, I'm going to show you what's marked as Exhibit A. Could you describe what this is?
So what I did is I took my phone, and I measured 10 feet, and I took a regular picture. So this picture was from 10 feet away, and then did the same thing.
Could you describe the sign?
No.
How does it appear to you?
It's very rundown, just like the building looked at the beginning.
Original.
Yeah, it's very original. So it's, again, very inaccurate, there is tenants there, they're no longer there, and there is missing tenants in that sign.
And this is a sign that the tenants have complained to you about?
That's correct. That's one of the main complaints that the tenants have been calling me for.
And this is a directory sign that is supposed to indicate which tenants are in the building?
That's correct. So this is supposed to indicate which tenant is the building, and also is supposed to indicate which suites are the tenants occupying. So when, when I spoke to the fire marshal, the fire marshal strongly recommended me that the sign must be upgraded, and he would like to have the tenants with the exact suite, so if, in case an emergency happens, he knows exactly where to go. He said that it would be also useful for the police department in case there is a call.
Okay, I'm going to show you what's been marked as Exhibit C. Can you tell us what this is?
So this is the same sign at exactly 25 feet.
And can, can you clearly see or read the sign from that distance?
I do have a perfect vision, I could see it, I'm going to be honest, but very, but blurry.
Okay. And did you also take that, on Exhibit D, a picture of the sign from 70 feet?
Yes, this was at 70 feet, and I could not read the names at all. I could see that it's a sign, but it's illegible.
And finally, you took one at 100 feet, is that correct?
Yes.
Is this, again, a picture of the sign?
This is at 100 feet, as right as you cross the bridge, and you pretty much can barely see there is a sign in there.
All the pictures just testified to, you took these pictures?
I did.
And do they accurately and fairly depict?
Yes.
The sign from the distances stated?
Yes. I did all the, all the measurement with a laser, with a laser meter that measures the distance.
Have you gotten a proposed sign designed?
Yes.
I'm going to show you what's marked as Exhibit F.
I spoke to a, a company that is not too far from Sterling. They proposed a more clear sign with very, not too large compared to the original one. It's almost double the size, but this would be much more accurate and more visible to the traffic.
Is this sign 22 and a half square feet?
Yes.
And what, what is permitted by the zone?
10 square feet.
Would 10 square feet work to adequately alert drivers to the occupants of the premises?
Well, the building fits 16, the building has 16 suites, so has a capacity of 16 tenants, and the building is, I believe it to be exact 7,200 square feet, and it has a sign of 10 square feet.
That's.
Two by five.
The current sign that's located there, directory sign, when you look to the left, is that, does that block the site distance?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
Does that, when you're looking to your left, if you're driving out, and the existing signs there, you can see down the road, can't you?
Yes, it's, it does not block.
Is this going to be any different?
No, this will be located at the exact same spot, nothing different, just a slightly bigger sign, so it's more, so it's more visual, and we can fit the names of the businesses.
I'm sorry, I had to stop you guys. So you said there's 16 suites in the building, right?
Yeah.
Are you saying there's 16 panels on the sign? Is that counted 12?
This is a proposed design.
That's the design, that's not the final problem.
There is 12 currently, right now, and he put 12.
Okay.
But there is 16 suites. There are a couple of these businesses that are occupying two suites.
I see, okay.
So, but when we spoke with the company, if you notice the bottom part?
Right.
It's just with black, and that would fit.
There's two different slats there, yeah.
Right, that would fit additional.
The reason I ask is because if, if you guys want to go larger than what you initially planned?
No, it will not be larger.
Okay, just making sure, because, you know.
I understand.
Yeah, okay, please proceed, my apologies, just wanted to clarify that.
Is there anything you can think of which would negatively impact the building or the surrounding area by the addition of the sign?
It will not impact anything in a bad way. It would actually look, make the building look nice and make the area look more presentable.
I have no further questions.
Can you tell me the height of the current sign?
The current height of the current sign, I would say, is about seven feet.
And did you say it's 10 square feet?
10 square feet, two by five.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, what I'd like to do, just to kind of go through our usual order, could we get the board professional? Liz, could you please start the questions, and then we'll get to the board.
Okay, yes, sure, Mr. Chair. One, just slight correction from what was testified, too. The way the ordinance measures sign area, it's really just the sign itself, so it's actually what you're proposing is 18 square feet, because it doesn't include the supports.
Okay, so yeah, this is the exact measurements of the sign.
Correct, so it's 72 inches in height, right? The sign, not the, not the support.
In height, it's 72 inches, that's correct.
And then, and 36 inches in width.
That is correct.
Right, so it's.
Without the poles.
Right, so it's 18 square feet, not 22 and a half.
Okay, I didn't know how, which way.
That's fine, that's fine, so.
That makes it even better.
Right.
The denial that we got from the zoning officers, though, said 22.5.
That's what we won based on.
And that was submitted with the application.
Okay, but I think, I included in my letter the definition for how you, how you do sign area, so which.
You did a report?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, I've never seen that. I haven't gotten anything from the.
So you never got the report from?
No.
Oh.
Sorry, I thought you sent, that would be my fault.
I have an extra copy, if you, yeah. I might need it back from at some point, Counsel.
Polly says that she loves it, it'll be huge.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, so it's going to become even more important to please go through your comments.
Okay, that's, that's fine. So a couple of questions I had, actually, and if you want to sit.
Yeah, please.
But I did, just more for our own record-keeping, is do you have any information on the other monument sign in terms of, you know, that just has the address and the name of the office park?
That will pretty much remain the way how it is, will be cleaned up and refurbished, but everything will stay existing.
But do you know what the square footage is of that sign?
I would say, if on top of my head, it's just the name, I would say just the sign part would probably be no more than seven square feet.
Okay.
Even that is probably pushing it.
Okay, and then, do you, do you know the height?
The height is five and a half feet high, five feet high.
Okay.
Because I can kind of tell from when I look at it, I'm six foot tall, so just to give you an idea.
Just to be clear, when you're saying it's five feet tall, you're including the supports in that, right?
With, correct, including support, yeah. It's just a strip name.
Right, not the panel.
Right, and it's actually facing the road, which it doesn't make sense, because cars are just flying by, and it's very hard to read it.
Yes, yeah, come, circle around, Mr. Sandow, just let's.
Okay, so the other questions I had, actually, this kind of goes towards maybe the interpretation by the board, but it would appear that this is sort of a monument sign in terms of where its location is and its size, but it's listing the businesses.
It's a directory sign.
And, okay, well, the directory sign, then you'll need more variances, and so that's, so I don't know if you want to say that, let me just go through this.
It's a monument sign.
It's not a directory sign.
Well, no, honestly, actually, the more you spoke and what you said, the police department said to you, makes me think you may need an additional sign. You may need an actual directory sign closer to the building, because I don't think that you're going to be able to fit the suites.
I am also installing, so as soon as you enter the building?
Yeah.
I'm actually installing a big panel, which will have also all the suites listed.
On the building?
Inside the, yeah, as soon as you, so it, it has two doors, as soon as you enter the first door, on the left or right, I think left side, there'll be a big panel which will have, again, all the businesses listed there. Because, again, that was one of the things that the fire marshal strongly recommended.
You said that's inside of the building?
As well, correct, yeah.
Okay, because the, I'll just say that the monument signs, you're permitted one per street frontage, so you would need a variance to provide, to have two, because you have the named sign, you know, of the, of the development, and then there'd be this sign, and, you know, they're located about 10 feet from the roadway, and you can have, so you can only have one, so you'd need a variance for two. And then there, you can have a maximum area of 10 square feet, and you're asking for this, this new one would be, what did I say?
18 square feet, yeah.
A directory sign, it is, it's smaller, you're permitted to have eight square feet, and, but it's supposed to be in the side or rear yard, or attached to the principal building, and I think, if I'm understanding correctly, you have two different reasons. You want a directory sign so that emergency services and also visitors who arrive at the front door know where to go, but then you also have people who are driving by, who you want to be able to provide, not advertising, but, you know, this is, this is where it is.
The businesses that are renting, they're saying that we would like the exposure of listing our business and people driving by to be able to see it, because they're like, we're paying rent, but yet we're in a building that you can't find it.
So I kind of think that there are almost two different types of signs that you need. You need one to sort of, in some ways, advertise that the businesses are at this location, and alert people who are coming along Valley Road that this is the location, but then I think once people park on site, whether it be, you know, emergency services or a visitor to one of the businesses, then they would need a sign as to where to go.
Correct.
Right?
Which it will be as soon as you enter the first door, correct?
So in my mind, I would suggest that you go for two, call them both monument signs, even though that second monument sign lists all of the tenants, and not call, consider it a directory sign, just because I think in this instance and in our ordinance, a directory sign is, is a little bit different. It's more along what you're, you're proposing within your building.
See, the way, the way how we, we thought on doing this sign is that the top part will show the number of the building and will show the building name.
Right.
And then it will list the rest of the businesses down. So we kind of figured that we're exposing the building name on the top, and then we're listing the businesses. It's like if you drive by the mall, right, right down the left side, where's the shop, right, whatever, it's the name of the property, and then you have all the businesses. it's the name of the property and then you have all the businesses that have their sign.
It, it makes sense, it, it completely makes sense, but I think that there, if, if I'm, if the board is understanding what I'm saying, that they're two, kind of two different types of signs.
You're not suggesting that they change the design, you're just suggesting they change what they're calling it.
Exactly.
Can I just interject one thing? My recollection is that when I represented Mr. Kasneki, when he purchased it, I did an Oprah request and there was no violations. I assumed that those signs were approved already by the municipality. Why are they there if they, if there wasn't an approval and there's no notice of violation that I received, it's possible that
Did you get any, did you get any resolutions of approval when you did the Oprah request?
No, I didn't get anything.
Could have been a pre-existing, not a full condition, right?
Okay, did, did you have any other, the one thing, uh, before I turn it over to Mr. Sandow, who has a burning question, I know, is could you just comment on the zoning for this particular applicant and how that fits in?
Right.
With the surrounding area and, uh, this, this, this sign variance request?
So it's in the O office zone, which is, is very small, and they're fewer, they're located scattered around the township and they're getting smaller and fewer all the time. Um, so it's, it's a very limited scope in terms of where the zone exists. And, so, you know, and, and I will say this is a corner lot with a lot of visibility and they're actually consolidating the signs into two, just two on Valley Road. They're not proposing anything on Passaic Avenue, even though they are permitted. Uh, and so, I mean, I think that's all, I would say, then, there, you know, there's some, some questions I have about the design standards that I think, you know, we can go through, maybe after the board goes through their questions. Just that there, we have some designs, uh, standards for signage and just to see, I think you shouldn't have any issue complying with them, so, but we just want to get that information on the record.
Just from my eyeball, I didn't check the zoning map, but it is residential surrounding this corner lot.
It is, um, but it's, you know, these signs are on Valley Road, right? So it's, you know, it's, it's a fairly well-traveled roadway and, um, you know, it's not, um, in what I would call necessarily residential neighborhood, you know, but, yeah.
Great, all right, Mr. Sandow, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question. And, and this actually is many questions rolled into one. Is this really truly just a vanity sign? In other words, the tenants would like to see their name out on Valley Road?
That is, exactly.
I wouldn't call it a vanity sign. I would call it a reasonable request by businesses to expose their business to the public for the purposes to which they're established.
Any tenant in any business along Valley Road could make that same request. My question is, is there anything substantial behind this request other than satisfying the vanity of the tenants?
Yes.
Yes, and there are multiple things.
Is there, is there a contractual obligation between the owner and the tenants that the tenants will be listed on a sign like this?
Well, not, not a new sign.
And, and the reason I ask that question is because at another development on Valley Road, there is a contractual requirement that the tenant be listed on the sign on Valley Road. If you don't have a contract like that, then what is the purpose of this sign? It certainly isn't a directory sign because it doesn't tell you what room numbers are. And what I would like to see, incidentally, I parked in the driveway on my way here and I could not read the sign from the driveway, which is what, fifteen, twenty feet away? Uh, and, and my eyesight is very good, thank you. Um, I couldn't read it, the lettering is too small. Now, if you put in a bigger sign with bigger lettering, will it be, will the lettering be readable in its entirety for a car driving forty miles an hour on Valley Road, which is the speed limit in that area? And if the sign isn't readable, what is the value other than vanity?
So, we hope that it is. The sign company that designed it supposedly knows about those things.
I would like to see some expert testimony on the size of lettering that is required, uh, at forty miles, to be readable at forty miles an hour. And then, I'd like to see that lettering superimposed on a sign and see if it still fits the size that you are requesting. Now, you've got one sign there, it's got two doctors and the word chiropractic on it, on one line. That's a very smushy lettering. That's, that's gonna be unreadable at forty miles an hour unless the lettering is blown way up. I'd like to hear expert testimony from someone who knows road signs as to whether or not these letters are actually adequate for a forty mile an hour roadway.
Would you suggest for it to be bigger?
Say it again?
Would you suggest for the sign to be bigger? Because I am more than willing to do that. I, 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 I did something like this, so I don't exaggerate and I'm more within the norms. Otherwise, I can put whatever sign you want.
Well, I, I, I don't know that this sign is actually going to serve any useful purpose other than to clutter the highway.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask some questions?
Just a couple of technical questions about the design. Is it double-sided?
It is double-sided, yes.
Okay, and is it, is it backlit or?
It will be, uh, I have not figured out exactly which way because, uh, there is no power line there, even though there is a light pole within four feet of it, five feet of it. So, uh, one of the, when I spoke to the sign company, they offered, they have a kind of lighting that is solar-powered and it runs with batteries as well. So that's the suggestion, it'll be lighting from the bottom, light up, but it will not be like those strong lights that will affect the street, they're LEDs, just to light that sign.
Okay, you said it's gonna have the address on the top?
That's correct.
It looks like from the design, it's got that same kind of round top?
Correct, so, again, what I was trying to do is try to keep kind of like the same and not go overboard and exaggerate.
Is your intent to keep the other sign, keep both of them, or just go to one sign now that you've got?
I am taking the, the, I am taking this one off and just placing it the same. I am leaving that, that blue one, I'm just gonna refurbish it.
Okay, so you're leaving the one that says Colonial Professional Park?
Correct.
Okay.
Since it is there.
You're gonna put the new one exactly where the old one is?
The exact same spot.
Change the location, okay.
The exact same spot.
Okay, and then how high were the letters, in terms of inches?
I, uh, I would say the letters, I would say five inches, four and a half to five inches.
The letters?
No, four and a half, five inches.
About the existing one?
Like, like the existing one, or?
Yeah, your new one. So one, one line, one business, how many inches per, per business?
I don't want to say something that I'm not sure, but
Roughly.
I would, I would say between three to five inches.
I think it's, I think it's less.
I don't know, maybe.
Well, I'll tell you why, because each panel, it appears to be two and a half inches.
Okay, uh
So what, so what's the, what's
So then, then it'll be two inches then.
What's the height of the text area?
The height, it's seventy-two inches in total.
So seventy-two inches where the text is?
Correct, yeah, as, you're No, she's right, uh, it's two point five inches for each panel. And if you look at the writing, I would say it would be about two inches each letter.
I like that.
Correct.
Okay.
And again, I would love to make it, the sign bigger, if you guys allow me, but I just
Okay, let's go through, any other questions?
Yeah, so Liz, just a technical question. You said that it has to be ten feet from the curb?
Right.
So, looking at the site plan, it looks like the site plan line is pretty close to where the sign is now, if I'm reading the dark line.
Yeah, I put that in my, my letter, is I think that it is less than ten feet now and so, um, I recommend that when they put in the new sign, they'd be conforming.
So if they go ten feet in, they're almost gonna be at the light pole, it looks like, right? So, because, or would you still measure from the pavement?
You, you measure from the pavement, it gets the curb line, it's not the lot line.
And that's the outer edge of the sign has to be ten feet, right? So, and there's a tree behind the sign, right? So, if it's double-sided, one of the sides
We were, we were planning to clean up, so the, the bottom of the tree, it's all dead branches, we're planning to clean up that tree.
But you, you'd have to move the sign in a little bit, I think, to be conforming. And if it moves in off that spot, you're gonna have one side that's really close to the tree, right? Or
I mean, if I look at this picture right here, um
Because right now, it looks like to me, it's probably six feet from the edge. Couple of paces to the right is where the blacktop starts, right? So if you go another step in, you've got that tree that's now at eleven o'clock to where you're looking at the sign. So that, what I'm saying is that if you put the sign back in the spot where you're talking about now, you're only gonna get one side of frontage. So it's kind of be counterproductive for what you're saying that you want to do.
My plan was to put the sign exactly where it's located right now.
Right, so
To be honest.
Is that the best position of the sign, right? So if you're looking for, if the purpose is to allow people to know who's there and to also make it for emergency services, putting it to that one side behind a tree, when the fire department's gonna be coming from that direction up Passaic Ave seems to be counterproductive for what you're saying it's for, is what I'm trying to get at. So if the sign was closer to the corner of Valley and Passaic on the other side, that would allow for, if, if the purpose is for emergency services. But Liz, if they move the sign over that way, is there anything in the, the codes that could cause an issue? Or is there a traffic issue now by putting a sign closer to the intersection that I'm not?
It can't go, it can't obstruct a site triangle, which I, I don't know, if that, if that would.
Right, so that's what I mean, is I, I, I think that if, the purpose of the sign is X, if you're putting it back in that location, it'll serve the tenant purpose, but it won't serve the emergency service purpose. So is there another spot that wouldn't obstruct the triangle, but might be a better place that you may want to consider putting it?
I think the only spot is, is if it is like more in the corner of where it is right now, just push it more, closer to the
So closer, so moving west on Valley, closer to?
To the driveway, to the entrance. That, correct, that, that will have more exposure. And again, the tree, it's going to be cleaned up, so it will open up more the area.
Can I, I'm at, can I just ask, like, this is the other angle of that though, and you can
Yeah, that is
Right, but that's only about six feet off the grass, right? So if the, if Liz is saying that it needs to be put ten feet, it's gotta go four feet closer to the parking lot and there's that tree that's right there.
Right, but he's saying he wants it to go where it is now, which I guess you would need an additional
An additional variance, because it's only six feet off of the curb line, not from the property line. So, it, it'd be another variance to keep it where it is. If it becomes conforming, then it moves that four feet over behind the tree, is what I'm saying, this will make sense.
Well, we're happy to move it. We're not married to that site. We thought that would be more acceptable to the board if it was at the same location, that was the purpose of keeping it there. But you raise a good point. Um, maybe we can move it closer to the driveway and maybe look into removing the tree.
Can I make a suggestion? I'm, I'm the attorney, not the engineer, so this could be completely a bad idea, but I'm just gonna throw it out there. The, uh, what's marked is the masonry sign, the sign that's parallel with, with the street, that just says the business park name. Um, you, you said that it doesn't really even function correctly, right?
It does not, because it's actually facing the road and on the other side you cannot see it because there is literally trees.
Right, so with that
Sure.
With that being the case, what if you got rid of that sign and put the proposed sign that you're proposing here in that location? Would that be a little more visible?
It will not. It will be visible only going this way, but not on the other side.
Is there a tree?
Because there is, correct, there is trees by the bridge.
We don't object to removing the other sign, by the way.
Yeah.
If it's an issue for the board
Correct.
And it's a violation, uh, your planner has indicated that, um, having two signs is an issue.
I've got some, I've got some
We'll offer to remove that sign.
I've, I've got some
Before we get to that, Mr. Vice Chair, could we just get any other points of clarification to what's been testified and, or questions? Yes, if you do have a question before we get into the statement.
I just grabbed the first website that answered the response about the size of letters. And according to this website, and, and never trust the internet, at forty miles an hour, letter height should be thirteen inches, which is a little more than a foot. Now, if you stack sixteen of those on top of one another, you're gonna have a sign that's eighteen feet tall to be readable, according to this particular standard of thirteen inches at forty miles an hour. That's why I say, I, I don't know who your sign designer is or what his professional qualifications are, but we need somebody who's good at sign design and traffic, uh, who can provide expert testimony that the size of the lettering that you have proposed actually has any value.
Yeah, I, I, let me jump in here, I disagree with that. Thirteen inches, if you want to find a speed limit, you're going forty miles an hour, we've all been to the doctor. We've all gone to a professional building like this. We drive up, we know the address we're going to and we want to look at a sign as we get up to it and understand if our dentist is in there. That's all that we're talking about here.
It's a vanity sign.
Now, I would go so far as to say, a single-sided sign facing the road at the entrance is probably okay. That's just my opinion, I'm not suggesting that, but you don't need fifteen-inch letters. Two, three-inch letters, that's fine.
Because then in that case
You want to make sure you're in the right place, that's it.
Well, I think it goes back though to, from what I'm hearing, is the purpose of the sign, to your earlier comment, Mr. Sandow. What is the purpose of the sign? If it's to advertise the businesses, I don't think that's gonna be very effective with a two to three-inch, you know, placard.
So again, again, this
Provide a directory of who's in the particular development, yes, but then I think you've got alternative locations because you're already at the site, to Mr. Laviger's point. You're already at the site. I had no trouble finding why, by the way, your beautiful building, just using, who?
I totally agree.
I don't think anybody's gonna have a problem finding your, your property. In fact, now everybody registers their business with that and they'll probably be able to find their business at that location as well. So, um, I, you know, the signage is a little bit, it's, it's a tricky issue in regards to what you're really trying to achieve. And I just want to, for this board's sake, have a better understanding of what we're truly trying to do. You've got, you know, EMT, you've got potential vanity or advertising, and you've got a director. Lots of different things going on here, so, you know.
I was just taking whatever was existing and trying to make it better to bring it up to date with the building. Pretty much the building was really falling apart, like I had to do roof, parking lot, clean it.
You've done a wonderful job, the parking lot
So I'm trying to make it look nice.
Looks beautiful, the building looks fantastic. We're just trying to come up with a way to comport with our ordinance.
And this was brought up
Do you have a question?
Can I, can I make, it's kind of a comment, like, I guess I'm on the same page as some of you, I think, but I, I, I actually think what's there now is quite unattractive and that a new sign would be a good thing. So, it's, I, I'm more trying to figure out, not as much what's your purpose, but what our problem is, whether it's that it's too big, is that what we're concerned about, is whether it's too big? Because I don't know that, well, I don't know that I'm as concerned with what their purpose is because I don't need to solve for his business issues. I'm just trying to figure out whether I think it's a good size or not. So
Yeah, I agree.
I think, like, I think just, also, there's two signs there already and so, what we're asking him to do is actually change something that's already existing. So I, personally, to make this quick, my comment quick, I think a new sign where it is would be lovely. Maybe a little smaller might be nice, but I, I actually think a new sign, that, and I was gonna ask if you would be opposed to like a wooden sign with just the landscape lighting, which might be what you're actually describing.
That's what this is exactly, yeah, it's a wooden sign.
That would be much nicer than what's there now.
Yeah, it's, again, it's very clean, wooden sign with some, you know, some lights in the bottom and that's it. It's the, the way how, again, they, they did bold letters, so again, try to make it as more visual as possible, not to have it super maxed-up size and then have you guys put in a have you guys put in a spot to be denied. So we tried to come up with something that is more reasonable.
So I guess I'm just trying to streamline what we, what our actual concern is versus what their business purpose is.
I'm on the same page with you.
Yeah, and I think that's a very good comment, Teresa, in regards to that particular issue. Are there any other comments?
I'd just like to point out that there are only five office buildings in town. And although this is the largest of the office buildings that I'm aware of, although I'm not sure about that. And the fire companies know where these five uh, buildings are. The first aid squad knows where these buildings are. I don't think this sign in any size is going to help the fire and first aid locate a tenant who says his address is thirteen ninety Valley Road. Uh, I think that's a spurious argument, and I certainly would not consider it as a part of in uh, that that we're gonna help the fire and first aid in the slightest. There are a lot of other signs in town that would be required that would be more helpful to fire and first aid than this one. Everybody knows where Colonial Park is. And there are, like I said, there are only five office buildings in town, and uh, how hard is it for a fire company to find a an office building? Especially since one of the fire companies is right down the block from you.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, so you're probably not gonna like what I'm gonna have to say, but I'm not in favor of the sign. Um, I've ridden by there on my bike, I've never seen that sign. It doesn't stick out to me. I'd rather see that directory in the building when people walk in to see it. I'd rather you take the other sign that has the address, turn it on its side, create a forty-five out of it, so that way you can see it coming from both directions. I would, I would, I would be more in favor of something like that.
Yeah.
But I I don't. I go by it forty miles an hour, I go by it twenty miles an hour on my bike, I'm not seeing that. And I'm right up against that curb as I go riding on that line.
You don't see the existence.
I don't see that sign, I don't see it.
So that makes it. So that makes it even worse, again, for for a building, for an office building.
You're not changing it, you're not, your height's not gonna be all that different. The size of font, of the of the writing that's going in there, as condensed as it may be, or as wide as it may be, depending on who your um, red, uh, commercial properties that are in there, not gonna see it. And I guess my other concern is this. Someone's gonna slow down on that portion of the road to try to read the sign to see if that their dentist or whatever professionals in there, they're gonna slow down before they turn in. Maybe that sign would be better served on the other side of the driveway as they can pull into the driveway and then see the sign where 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 the vanity is.
Right.
Maybe that's a better option. Maybe that sign needs to be further in on the on the on the parking lot.
You mean where the masonry sign is?
Where the masonry sign is across where your finger is, is driveway, right? Right where your finger is, the masonry sign. But to the right of where your finger is, there's some, looks like some grass before you get to some shrubbery. There, you could probably put a low sign, you don't have to have it seven feet, maybe it's a four feet, two columns, sign, sign, you know, list, list, you're only doing one side.
More parallel to the ground rather than.
And you're only doing one side of the sign, you're not doing two sides of the sign.
Can I just ask if you were.
Not visual, no.
What they're proposing, you think you want a sign that big there?
No.
Or you just think it's not gonna serve the purpose?
I don't think it serves the purpose. You don't see it at forty miles an hour. I, like I said, on my bike, I don't see it.
So let me ask you a question again. Um, and again, it's my first time doing this, so if I say something wrong, please apologize. I apologize, so I I apologize.
What I was gonna say.
So, no, 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 please, I I I respect your your response. Um, so you're saying that, so it's an office building.
Mm-hmm.
It's commercial.
Mm-hmm.
Paid a ton of taxes for it.
Mm-hmm.
And you're saying that I should not have the right to expose that commercial building with the signage, just like every other business is on Valley Road that has massive signage? I'm just, I'm I'm just saying, are you, are you suggesting that a signage should not be needed for this commercial property?
So you have a sign that calls out the office complex. You have an office complex, a professional building. You have that sign already established.
It is, it's facing the road and it's not visual.
And I, that's why I said, turn it to forty-five, you got two going, then you have a wedge, someone coming west, someone coming east, they're gonna see that sign. They'll see that sign. Don't leave it flat to not.
But that becomes, that gets, that gets to the earlier comment about a monument sign.
There's a monument sign already.
There is one.
That's the one I'm talking about.
Exactly.
But I'm not talking about putting names. I'm not talking about putting names on it, not talking about commercial on there. You're saying this is the office complex.
Someone says, I got a dentist in that office complex, I see the sign for office complex, oh, that's my office complex, and.
Correct, but the current tenants that I have, they have leases and everything, they've been there for years, and they have a sign. They have a name on that.
Okay.
And I cannot take their name down because I have a contract with them. I I I inherited leases and tenants when I purchased that building, I have still the same tenants.
So he asked a question, or I think he asked a question.
Dennis asked earlier.
Dennis.
Dennis, sorry, Dennis asked a question. Are you contractually oblig- obligated with your tenants to have a s- a a sign like this with their name, with their, with their company's name out there on the street?
Yeah, I said I'd have to review the contract.
Okay.
I, I mean, I have to review the contract, but but as far as I remember speaking to the gentleman that sold me the property, I remember him mentioning that uh, they paid for actually having, I actually, believe it or not, this sign was refurbished not long ago based from him, and apparently the tenants paid for. Which I don't know what, how much they paid for, but it's a, it's like made.
I'm not saying that they don't have a right.
No, no, I understand.
You're the owner of the property, you can do what you want with the property, right?
I'm just trying, I was just trying to, again, like, I took this this design from another office building in Morristown. My daughter goes to assumption school, so right across with assumption school, there is a beautiful property that has five, six offices. They're mainly low firm, stuff like that, and they have the same exact sign. And that's how I was, my wife actually went to that property and asked them, who did your sign? It looked very nice. I was across the street from where the school is, which I would say I was about sixty, seventy feet away, and I could clearly read every single name. And that's how, and we literally measured that sign, and this is exactly that sign. The the company, they just took these names just to give you an example. But these names will be rewritten properly and will have at the end the suite number.
So from my point of view, if you have five or six, it probably makes more sense. But a lot of times, those signs don't have trees around them either, so they're usually more open on like a masonry footing or something along those lines right behind it, right? So having sixteen of them kinda goes back to Mr. Sandow's point, that you only have two to three inches per name. So when you're driving by quickly, you don't really get that same exposure that you need, right? So I think that the fact that you're putting the the directory sign inside, but also, I think it could be something where you just have the name of the parking list, going back to the question, are you, do you have to list?
Well, the the way how the building, the way how I would prefer for the future of that building to be is not have sixteen tenants and not have twelve tenants. I would prefer to have, and I think that's what's gonna be the future of that building, of having uh, two, three main businesses that will have enough space on on a similar eighteen square feet sign to expose their business. That's what, that's what's gonna probably be the future of it, or at least that's what I would prefer.
That's why I kinda like that sign on the east side of the driveway.
But you cannot read it from the other side at all.
Yeah, go ahead.
So just so, so if you have, so Liz, when we approve the sign, do we approve the spaces on each of the sign? Or are we just approving the size of the sign, right? So there's sixteen or fourteen slots on there, right? And if the future, there's only three tenants, it does make sense to have eleven blank slots, right? Are we saying that the font on there has to be a certain height? Or can we approve that it's a bigger height than what's currently being proposed?
You could impose it as a condition, sorry to.
Yeah, no, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, what, I, if you just take it as it is, let's just say for, this is sake of example, we're gonna consider this a monument sign. Um, in which case, they need a variance to permit a num- two sign, two monument signs, and then one sign to be, the panel to be eighteen square feet. Right, that's all your, those are the parameters they have to work with.
Mm-hmm.
If you felt that as it may be a plausible condition of approval, that, you know, this, the text be a certain size, um, obviously would have to relate to the deviations from the ordinance, which I think, you know, there's an argument to be made for that. Um, then you could kinda get into the granular aspects of regulating the size of the font. But, you know, just.
Think if we're not opposed, like, to consolidation of these units in the future, then it needs to come back again.
But, but does he, is kinda my question, right?
Right, right, so I'm saying.
So I'm trying to avoid them having to come back. If if your plan in the future is to go from twelve to three, it doesn't make sense to come back and have to get a secondary approval, is what I was trying to.
It's a flexible building, so it can, like, you can have a tenant that can have six suites.
Right.
Like, currently, right now, uh, there is, for example, one tenant that has three suites, which is Awakeness Wellness. Um, they have another tenants that have two suites. So again, preferably, I would like to have three, four main tenants. And like, for example, I have one tenant that is moving out at the end of this month. Why? Because he's saying there is not enough business. I'm trying to save a commercial space that lately is dying, and I'm trying to make it as best as possible. We have commercial space in the area that we have them vacant and falling apart and really not looking nice. So again, I'm just trying to figure out the best way of making it look better.
Well, maybe what we could do is use this time to just, I think you've gotten some opinions expressed to you uh, by the board here. Uh, I want this time to be productive for you. By the way, welcome to the community.
Thank you.
I mean, it's great that you're uh, here uh, with a business that you're trying to improve and and working with your tenants and so forth. Um, but we do wanna make sure you have this time as being constructive. I don't know, just hearing the board, if we're all on the same page. I'm still a little unclear as to what your application is and constitutes. And where things are positioned. I am concerned about sightlines. Uh, I I do feel that the sign is, the current sign with the directory is too close to the road based on walking that area. Uh, and I think anything closer to the road is gonna impinge even more on any sightlines with people trying to get out of that drive on what busy, you know, and and the street where people could be going forty miles an hour. Uh, so, um, you know, I I I heard a good alternative. I do agree with uh, board member who mentioned that uh, uh, an improvement is necessary in the signs. I think we're not, we're not saying you can't have a sign, that's not our intent at all. It's just how can we come up with the best uh, approach?
Okay.
And so you've heard, I think, a couple of different, I don't know if there are any other opinions as to or suggestions uh, for this applicant. Uh, or if you want to try to clarify for the board with the proposal tonight, I just don't, I I don't get the sense that you're we're all on the same page with your proposal.
Mr. Chairman, could I hop in real quick? Just for the applicant's sake, um, you know, the board, I can't speak for the board on their attorney, but I, they might be open to, you know, granting continuance, letting you guys come back in a month if you wanna go back to the drawing board. It sounds like there might even be some due diligence.
We're gonna have to come back.
Yeah.
Don't you think so, or?
Might be a good idea to look at that lease as well.
Consensus tonight.
No, I, I get it, that's fine.
I think you should, you should uh, find a sign maker who can design a sign for you that doesn't have as much white space in it. If you take a look at the picture of the proposed sign, not only is the text small, but at the end of each one of the strips, there's a lot of white space. And you're wasting a lot of time or a lot of space on your sign with plain white. Somehow or other, those entries should be rearranged so that they fill the available space instead of wasting it with white space. Shorter names and longer names should be organized in such a way that you don't waste a lot of acreage with white. And a a a different sign maker, uh, who also knows the rules about uh, size versus speed uh, may be of value to you at this point.
Again, this was just an example. This is not the final uh, design. This was an example that the sign company sent us for a quote. That's, that's, I mean, the names will have to be rearranged, will have to be, I will have to ask each tenant one more time, how would you like the name to be presented? And and also on that, some of that white space that you mentioned, there will be the suite number. The suite number and letters be.
Now, two short names should, could be next to each other instead of being on top of each other with white space on both sides.
I don't think you're gonna get this application approved by having a directory sign like that. I'm just, this is my opinion I'm gonna express to you, is I think that type of sign on a roadway is really challenging. And I would encourage you to look at some of the other signs. There's a off a professional building right here in Gillette, or just the next, next little town over as you go east on Valley before you get to Mountain Avenue.
Six eighty-nine Valley Road, that's a comparable property to what you have.
Very similar. I actually have a photo that I can share with you tonight of that. I took a photo to look and compare that. Yes, to compare that to what you're proposing. Now, they have a lot fewer tenants, but I think that it serves the purpose to get somebody to that location, and then there are directories at the building.
Pretty big, so.
Yeah, here's six eighty-nine Valley Road.
Yep.
That's where Dr. Loreno is.
Just to be clear, when you're saying this, that's a, a screenshot of Google?
Yeah, that's Google Maps.
For the record, okay, so it's Google Maps Street View of.
Yeah, again, I I am totally okay to change the design. That's bigger, by the way, than what we're proposing, I would love that.
And and by the way, we're not adverse to.
Again, I just.
Don, I think that's, I I don't know, I, I just, to give them a fair opinion, I I think, I'm having a hard time understanding what everyone's different opinions are. I think it might help them to understand, that's what I was trying to say before. Is it the size that we're, that we're concerned about, or is it that we're concerned about the purpose that the sign is gonna serve? Just because my understanding is, and I don't wanna speak for you, is that you are actually just trying to mimic what's there.
Correct, that's exactly.
So I just wanna make sure what we're saying to them is is clear.
By show of hands, Mr. Chairman, don't mind me asking, does anyone have a problem with the size of the sign that they're proposing? Okay.
Can I suggest, actually, one of the things that you think about is maybe consolidating the signage? So you have this monument sign right now that has the address. And then you have the directory sign. And so I think if you look at the sample that was just suggested to you, well, first of all, it is perpendicular to the roadway, which I think is probably more effective for what you want. But it also combines them both, and I think that might alleviate some of the concern about size because you'll be decluttering the signage. If that means, if you, if that makes any sense, you'll have fewer signs. So you may have to go bigger than what you're proposing, but maybe the the argument can be made.
Yep, so then what I'll do is that I'll go to the sign company. I'll, I'll have them redesign a new sign with slightly bigger by consolidating both signs. I'll propose to remove the other one because it's unnecessary. So that way, there is one sign that will have the main building name and the directory under, similar to what you.
Go take a look at it.
Yeah, that's perfect, that's perfectly fine.
I like that approach.
Again, I I wanna just do whatever it makes sense.
That was very good, too, we'll have to check that out.
But it it it's probably a little bit lower to the ground, and it it may have, in terms of what Mr. Sandow started this whole conversation, and he's right, is that it's hard to read going, you know, you're not gonna get people at fifty miles an hour being like, oh, wait a minute, there it is. Uh, but I think it does give your tenants a certain visibility um, to pass or buy. Which I guess maybe is what the point is.
Okay.
And to reduce the number of signs.
Yes, yeah.
I think that, that's what I hear, I I think would be.
I mean, as of right now, I can really reduce it to, I believe, seven or eight tenants. And I'm comfortable doing that.
About reducing, you have two signs.
Oh, yeah, totally agree. It it does not make sense to have the other one.
So maybe combine the both.
Just for calibration, if I can, uh, about ten years ago, there, we identified a bunch of businesses which were off the main streets, they were on side streets. And we started a process of trying to put signs on the main street pointing off to a barber shop or a dentist who was on a side street. There weren't very many, fewer than ten. And in fact, as time has gone by, that's shrunk, and I think we could only identify about two or three right now that are left. And I think we could only identify about two or three right now that are left in town that would require the sign. But the principal reason that it dragged out and ultimately died was there was a sentiment amongst the commenters in the town and amongst the township committee that we already had too many signs. And so to, to approve a sign that specifically lists your tenants who are on the main street with a main street address, Valley Road, as opposed to being on a side street, to give them prominent display when we won't give the merchants who are off on the side streets a prominent display, that's, that doesn't sit well with, with me because of the need to reduce the number of signs in town rather than increase them.
Yep. Okay, so unless there's any other comments, I'm gonna help us move along here, okay?
Okay.
And, and again, I thank you, thank you for your patience. We look forward to seeing you again.
Do we want to continue this hearing or start again?
Yeah, it was just that-
Yep.
Mr. Sandow stole my thunder, Mr. Chairman, yeah.
I'm back to you as far as what we need to do now.
Okay, so actually first-
I would petition to carry this to the next meeting with the, with the proviso. We do not have to renotice.
Okay. Everyone's stealing my thunder today. Come on, let me do my job. Actually, Mr. Chairman, before-
Yeah, but I have to do all those.
Before I go any further, just real quick, I just want to know if there's no members of the public who want to ask questions or have kind of comments or anything. They'd have an opportunity at the next hearing, anyway. Deb, when's the next available meeting day for them?
Well, the next available meeting is in two weeks. Is that enough time for the applicant? I mean, that doesn't give us a ten-day window.
Yeah, that's-
So I would suggest four weeks from now, which would be October twenty-second.
Okay. October twenty-second, two-two. Is that okay with you, Counselor?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Just one last thing. I just suggest that you, well, you'll, you'll have my letter now, but just look at the signage regulations and see, just make sure in terms of lighting, in terms of materials, that you can comply.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Real quick, wait, 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 real quick, let me just make the announcement. This matter's gonna be carried to October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, seven-thirty PM.
Oh, we need a motion in a second.
All right, we need, oh, I'm, now I'm stealing their thunder. We're stealing from each other.
In order to carry it with no further notice required by the applicant.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good.
Okay, now I'll make the announcement. This matter's gonna be carried to October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, seven-thirty PM here in the municipal building, same place. No further notice either by mail or by personal service or by publication will be required, Counselor.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You've got a real opportunity to make a nice sign. These are not, these are not nice signs, I'm telling you right now, okay? I'm just trying to do-
Now, this, this, this is the, this is the back and forth.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Paul, the boss.
Take care.
All right.
Okay, on to item number ten. Anything to update on ordinance review, Mr. Sanders, at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I canceled last week's ordinance review meeting due to a personal matter that I needed to attend to. But the committee has had several conversations around setbacks with regards to the Valley Road District, discussions around House of Worship. We've also talked about ground floor apartments and what we could do there. We're also talking about the new zone, the, the rezonings that have been done. When I say rezonings, it's the name changes. So, like, Sterling Village is now, is no longer, I think, B one-five, I think was the, B one-five, yeah? So we're looking at that. We're looking at Milton Village. We're looking at all the different areas where we changed in the master plan, the, the names of these zones. We've also done an analysis to try and fi- figure out where these appear in ordinances so we can do, you know, the breadcrumbs of trying to make sure we touch here, we, we cascade it out. So that's the work that we're, we're currently involved in. Nothing new has come to us other than, was it sheds? There's still a discussion. Sheds is still a discussion, so we've not resolved that matter. So I will have a meeting with Ms. Dill and Mr. Hand.
What are we, we have these two, it looks like drafts.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Tell me what I finished.
So that, so that's the book of work that we've got currently in flight. And hopefully, we'll be able to bring some of those matters to, to the next meeting. But we'll have a meeting a week from today. We will invite Liz to that meeting, so that way we can talk about the topic again.
A question, too, of the sheds. I did speak with Board Attorney, Mr. Vuch, about his feelings on impervious coverage in sheds.
He's, he's stealing your thunder.
Everyone's stealing mine. What am I here?
So we may consider wanting Joe Vuch to come to the next meeting as well, if we're gonna be talking about sheds.
Okay, okay, thank you. I gotta remember how to say so.
I have one more comment just about it. It's just a goal that if we update one ordinance for one purpose, we want to make sure that any part of that ordinance that could also be changed will be changed, which is taking a little bit of mind, like-
We understand.
Speaking of infrastructure or ordinance-
Yeah, yeah, just trying to make sure that.
So, so, I'm good. There's been an example of that at our last meeting when we were talking about the height of a fence and then they were talking about retaining walls. And we had not discussed that. So, and those are both in the same ordinance, so, to your point, yes, but we can't talk about it. If we're talking about one piece and then all of a sudden we're digging up something that we hadn't addressed yet, it's only gonna prolong that ordinance.
Yeah, I don't know that they're perfect.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
But just to, as best we can.
Yes, thank you for that.
All right, all right, real, all right, real quick, I'm, I'm not gonna take up too much of you guys' time. So you guys remembered our last meeting, we were, I'd voted on and we were gonna ship out the, the home office sign and then the fence ordinance updates, right? So as I was going back and editing them, I realized that, like, first off, with the, the fence ordinances, that first statement of purpose section up there, as it previously read, it was very wordy and it just looked like, I wasn't, it, it read very poorly and I thought it would be kind of crappy to send that to the Township Committee reading the way it did. Also, with the, the sign ordinance, we, we did make that additional change to, was it subsection B? To add, to, to note that those regulations concerning flag, emblems, or insignias wouldn't, you know, apply to home office uses. So I had to go back and, I should have mentioned this at the last meeting, but I needed to go revise the whereas clauses in the beginning of that document to reflect that we're also proposing that change as well. So I just made, the long and short of it is, I made a couple changes to these that were very, they're non-substantive. They don't, you know, it doesn't affect what we're suggesting at the Township Committee. It was just, you know, cleaning up the whereas language, but I didn't feel comfortable shipping that off to the Township Committee without first showing the board because I didn't want you guys to see and be like, where, we didn't vote on this, what is this? You know what I mean? So, yeah, so that's where we are. I guess if you guys are okay with what we're presenting here.
I have a question on the fence one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Question, Mr. Sandow, yes?
No.
I, I have a comment on the-
That was me.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, both of you guys, go ahead.
Yeah, so second, second whereas, blah, 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 construction permits are not to be required for fences that are six feet or less. That's the Uniform Construction Code, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what, you're referring to the fence one?
Yes. Second, second whereas.
Yeah, or six feet or less in height.
Six feet or less. Now, let's go down to one fifty-four-one, fences, walls, and hedges. B, construction permits shall be required for fences six feet or more in height.
Right.
Did we really mean to say for fences that exceed six feet?
Yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, okay, yeah, it's gotta be a little bit over.
Yeah, just say exceed six feet in height.
For fences that exceed six feet.
Correct, thank you.
Well, good thing we brought this back then, good catch. Six feet.
Yes, please, Mr. Sandow.
Yeah, on, on the fence ordinance, on page two, paragraph delta five.
Yes.
The last sentence. This is a keeper from an old ordinance. And I think this is a good opportunity, as long as we're looking at this ordinance, it's a good opportunity to take this out. The township engineer has no way to determine the status of a paper street for the purpose of administering this section. The township engineer is a contractor. I have great respect for the man as an individual. I'm sorry, am I interrupting you, Tom?
No, I was only saying that we were talking about it last time.
And, and I would suggest that you poll the town administrator as well as members of the township committee to find out if the township engineer is the reasonable party to make a determination that a paper street will never be developed. Now, last December, or maybe November, the township committee had an ordinance to vacate some paper streets. And I did account for them and I come up with ninety-five paper streets in town. How many of them are ever gonna be converted or upgraded to paved rights of whites? Probably none. But on the other hand, the township committee has now taken ten months and has, although they promised back in November, December, to deal with this problem, they haven't dealt with it. We've still got ni- over ninety paper streets that probably, most of them should be vacated. And then this would, problem would go away. Or at least we should identify as a matter of public policy which paper streets are going to be upgraded. But I don't think we should leave it to the township engineer to make a decision that affects the decision-making strategy of the planning board.
Are you recommending that the sentence be struck?
I'm recommending that the ordinance committee do some real research and find out who amongst us all, including the township committee and all the township employees and contractors, who, if a decision has to be made, if there is an option for an applicant, who should make the decision that controls the applicant's options? And, and it's probably not the township engineer. Maybe it's a sense of the board itself should control here. Unfortunately, you can't do an application based on the sense of the board if you haven't heard the sense of the board because they haven't seen the application. And that's a chicken and egg problem. A little more thought has to go into this.
I think that, Mr. Sandow, thanks for your comments. But with the bigger issue is what are we doing with the paper streets? Are we going to vacate them? Are we gonna vacate some of them? Are we not gonna do anything with them? And if we tackle that problem, that will address this problem.
You need to survey the township committee members because it's ultimately their decision as to whether they move forward on doing something about these ninety-five or that they leave it buried where it has been buried since last November.
So then my comment still, my comment rests.
I know we, I remember we, we discussed this a lot at the last meeting, I can't rem-
Yes, it is.
I can't recall why it was exactly-
We were talking about corner lots and hair streets, that's how that conversation came up.
Right, I think the ultimate determination was to keep it, the language in.
Correct.
Right.
We have one paper street in town that is a hundred and forty feet long. That's shorter than the length of this room. And yet it makes the two properties on both sides of that hundred and forty-foot paper street, it makes both of them corner lots. And, and that's a real awkward situation. We have a situation where when a developer puts in a street, the property next to the developed, developed lot might become a corner lot, subject to all the corner lot rules, depending on where the developer places the street in his development. Because he, you, he can put a street next to a lot that's, that's fully built out and all of a sudden, that lot is a paper street and it violates a whole bunch of things in terms of setback. And we, we need to, we need to be very careful how we address paper streets in the ordinance. And as long as this ordinance is up for review, this is probably the trigger for fixing-
Can I, can I make a suggestion then? I would suggest, since we did deliberate this in the last meeting, which I don't know if you were in attendance.
He was not.
Mr. Sandow, I would still suggest, I think, with the board's consensus, that we push this to the Township Committee. It, it-
Can I make a, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Because we've talked about the paper streets when we went through this exercise and looked, it was, it was a really a good use of the township's time to clean up problems on ninety streets where there's no compelling event causing us to do anything. And so the policy that we talked about in the conversation with Jack Pigeon, our Township Attorney, is that we would deal with these things as a compelling event came up. And recently, we did that up on Long Hill Road, as I'm sure you're aware, at the sale of two properties. So if you want to be clearer in the language on this sentence here, you know, maybe, maybe you can say something that waves a little bit towards, you know, the township engineer in conjunction with the township attorney, determining if there's a compelling event that would change the status of the paper street, blah, 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 blah. Many of these things are out in the middle of wetlands, they're not going anywhere. And we, Tom, how many ordinances do we need to do for this master plan?
About fifty.
About fifty, right. Do you really want to work on ninety paper streets? No.
Not individually, no.
No, no. As a compelling event comes up and we need to take action, let's deal with them then. If you want to clean up this language, and I agree, it's a little bit ambiguous because what does it mean, determine the status, right? Township engineer shall, township engineer shall research and determine the status whether a compelling event exists for a paper street, blah, blah, blah. I don't know, right? But, you know, just fix that line and we'll move on.
Yeah.
We've got work to do.
I understand. That's what we're trying to do.
If I recall, the, the impetus behind this was just cleaning up subsection B just for the, to make it consistent with the UCC. And that was the initial.
That is correct.
Right.
And, and, and to Ms. Dill's point, this is where we had an opportunity to maybe do some other work in here as well, which doesn't always come to light when we're working on particular pieces.
Right.
So is the takeaway here that we're going to take that last sentence and, and modify it to say the Township Engineer and the Township Attorney or Township Committee? Scott?
I, I-
Is it, is it one in the same? If I say Township Committee, the attorney's already there? Or is it best to call out Township Attorney?
I'd, I'd have to think about that.
The Township Committee needs to appoint a paper street steering committee.
No, we don't. No, we don't.
Steering Advisory Committee.
I will-
Could I make a suggestion? We could, the board could, could send this off to the Township Committee as is, but maybe include a, a note or a letter in the, in the doc-
Let's do that, let's do that.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Says, hey, this is something to look at? Okay.
We'll give them some work to do. Entirely too much joking going on.
Right, right. Because I think that's something more, you know, within their purview, anyway.
Anything else in regards to ordinance review?
Oh, real quick. So everyone's okay with, we're gonna change B in that subsection just to say construction permits shall be required for, Roman numeral one, fences that exceed six feet in height?
Yep.
Right, okay. And we're gonna leave the whereas language as it was?
Yeah.
And everyone's cool with my change to that first paragraph on the residential home office sign ordinance, right? Okay, all right, great. All right, so I'll finalize the other one, send it to Deb. I'm gonna do it tomorrow and we can ship it off to Township Committee. We could talk about, about a note, kind of summarizing the, the conversation.
I'll draw something up.
Okay, all right, cool. All right, sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then there's one last piece. If anyone sees any ordinance that should be reviewed, I have circulated the template. Just fill out the template as best as possible so that way we can add it to our book of work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Okay, on to item number eleven, any older new business for the board?
Still need to reach out to prison.
Okay, prison pending. Okay, with that said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Call a favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Thank you all.